Good evening. I'll call the order of the public hearing and begin with this legal notice. All right, so first we have our legal notice of the public hearing. Common Council of the City of Oleane, New York has scheduled a public hearing for Tuesday, November 26, 2024 at 6:00 p.m. in the council chambers of the Oleane Municipal Building. The purpose of this hearing is to receive public input on the proposed local law 04-2024 to extend a moratorium on the creation of new solar farms and energy production facilities in the city of Oleane. For more information or for a copy of the proposed legislation, please contact the Common Council office at 716-376-5635, or visit us www.cityoleane.org. So at this time, I will ask for public comment in relation to this particular public hearing. There will be another opportunity for general public comment during the regular meeting. But as it stands, I'm opening up for public comment relating to the local law 04-2024.
Mary, excuse me, Mary Fay out of the 525 First Avenue in Oleane. In full disclosure, I also sit on the Oleane City Planning Board. I am here to recommend, advise, that you continue the moratorium on any further solar, and I wouldn't use the word "farms," it's misleading, they are solar facilities. They are not farms. They are taking away our farmland. They are made of photovoltaic cells made of toxic materials, silicone, cobalt. It's child labor that is used to garner these components of the solar panels. And the lifespan is about 20 to 30 years. What's going to happen when they start having to be replaced? What are we going to do with that electronic trash? There are no accommodations for that. And we are also taking away farmland, recreational land, all of the things that are exactly the opposite of what this green program is to protect our planet. It is not. All of these solar facilities are removing all of the beautiful land that we have in our area. We call it renewable energy. The other problem in New England, where we live, as you know, we have what they call low light days. Our number of sunny days that would be able to capture this energy, which is very inefficient to begin with, are so low that it makes, it's absurd to even think it is a good source of energy. So I'm asking that you stop the sprawl, which is actually a website, stopthesprawl.com. I encourage you all to go to that site and educate yourselves on solar facilities and wind farms and how inefficient they are. We're already 90% green in our area, thanks to Niagara Falls, and we don't even need any of these solar panels. Some aren't even hooked up, the infrastructure isn't even there to accommodate them. And the goal of Albany is to funnel whatever energy minimal that it would be down to New York City. We don't need it in our area, so I encourage you to continue the moratorium. Thank you.
Anyone else on this? Anyone else? Anyone else? All right, same none. I'll call the public hearing closed. Okay, at this time, I'll call the order of the committee of the whole for Tuesday, November 26, 2024. Let the record show that all older men are present, with the exception of older woman Fornie, who is excused. First on our agenda, we have PL 110-24 by Mayor Alio to rename the Downtown Property Improvement Program, the Commercial Property Improvement Program, as well as to amend the Oleane Revolving Loan Fund Committee to the Oleane Commercial Loan Fund Committee, and to amend the guidelines and applications to reflect this change. Mr. Mayor?
Carrie, I was here to speak on this.
The city's been running this with that program since 2003. As you may recall, in 2017, New York State had advised that we could no longer run the revolving loan fund program, which we stopped immediately. The committee was named after that fund, which also oversaw the Downtown Property Improvement Program. I'm simply just asking for a change in the program name because it's misleading. It's actually open to all commercial properties within the city of Oleane. And so I would like to make that change. We did a few months ago with the account at Five Star Bank. However, I should have done the program name at that time.
Comments, questions? Thank you, Carrie. Can I get a sponsor for this?
A sponsor.
Motion made by Alderman McCall, seconded by Alderman Benyon, all in favor. I oppose. Motion carried. Referring to next regular meeting. Make a motion to adjourn our committee of the whole. Seconded, seconded by Alderman Robinson, all in favor. I oppose. Motion carried. I call the order of the regular meeting of the common council for Tuesday, November 26, 2024. Oldham Court, please call the attendance hall.
Alderman Benyon?
Here.
Alderman Panis?
Here.
Old Woman Fornie? Old Woman McCall?
Here.
Alderman Robinson?
Here.
Alderman Anastasia?
Here.
President Crawford? Fix our president at court.
Please rise to the invocation and the pledging allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of this community. In your name we pray.
On the invitation of the United States of America, to the Lord who stands on nations, under God, in the glory of the Father, and in the judgment of justice.
Pleading, correcting, and approval of the minutes of the previous regular meeting.
The regular meeting of the Oleane Common Council will sell on Tuesday, November 12, 2024 at 15:00 p.m. Present were Alderman Crawford, Benyon, Panis, Fornie, McCall, Robinson, and Anastasia. None more, absent.
All right, I make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous regular meeting. Seconded. Seconded by Alderman Anastasia, all in favor. I oppose. Motion carried. Committee reports and unfinished council business.
Done.
How about communications from the mayor?
Thank you. Special proclamation for Zantica. Zanta says no to violence against women, so please would you read your proclamation?
Special proclamation for Zanta says no to violence against women, whereas Zanta International envisions a world in which women's rights are recognized as human rights, a world in which every woman is able to achieve her full potential, have access to all resources, and is represented in decision-making positions on an equal basis with men. Whereas in an effort to raise awareness and take action to prevent gender-based violence, Zanta International Clubs across the world are participating in the 2024 "Zanta Says No to Violence Against Women" campaign with 16 days of activism from November 25th until December 10th, 2024. Whereas the Oleane Zanta Club has encircled trees on North Union Street and in Lincoln Park with orange ribbons to honor the victims of domestic violence and to raise awareness to this cause. Therefore, in recognition that public awareness helped to support victims, I, William J. Alio, Mayor of the City of Oleane, on behalf of the common council, do hereby proclaim November 25th until December 10th as Zanta says no to violence against women in the city of Oleane. In testimony thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause to be affixed the seal of the city of Oleane the 26th day of November, 2024, for the city of Oleane, New York, signed William J. Alio, Mayor.
We have with us tonight three members of the Zanta Club. Gretchen Coppola will be accepting this on behalf of them. So I thank you for that.
Yes, this is President of the Zanta Club Oleane, Joy Snyder, and this is one of our newest members, Colleen Bernstein. And we also have Sonya McCall, who's a member, among others.
Thank you for coming.
Okay. Thank you. How about miscellaneous communications?
Done.
City official reports?
Done.
Proposed legislation and referrals?
PL number 110-24 by Mayor Alio, referred to committee as a whole Tuesday, November 26, 2024, by council president.
Okay, before I open it up to public comment, I'd like to give an opportunity to any of the older men to make a statement at this time. Okay, same none. Mr. Quirk, will you please read public comments, Carrie?
Public comment portion of the common council regular meeting is established to provide members of the community with the
Sorry.
With the opportunity to publicly state their views, voice their concerns, or to provide input pertaining to any issue affecting city government. Additionally, the mayor, common council members, and city department heads encourage any person with questions to contact them at their offices.
Okay, at this time, I would invite any members of the public to please approach the podium, state your name and address for the record. You'll have five minutes.
Glen Wall, 9346 Sawmill Run Road, Little Valley, New York. Good evening. I'm here once again to speak about the City of Oleane sewage overflow discharge problem. Last August, there were no responses to the RFP posted earlier in the summer. So I waited a few weeks, and then on September 19th, I sent Brad Camp an email that read, "Hi Brad, could you please provide a brief update about where the overflow discharge solution plan is? I need to write an update for the two environmental groups I'm with. I know that you didn't get any bids on your RFP. Are you still pursuing that? Have you considered, instead of hiring a company to enact and oversee the project, to directly hire a team, or more than one team, of workers who could do the house-to-house survey to determine whether rainfall collection is segregated from the sewer? After all, smoke tests aren't rocket science, and if these teams had been formed last spring, by now much of the work needed to do the survey and have the code enforcers make sure changes were made could have been done. Since the mayor's office did not do what it needed to get residents to hold off adding sewage to the system during downpours, Oleane is still very much at risk for polluting the river. Fortunately, we haven't had much extreme weather lately, but that's just luck. Thanks very much. I appreciate your time." I received no response from Mr. Camp, and I was out of the country for a few weeks, and on November 18th, I sent a similar email to Brad Camp, asking for an update. I didn't get an response from him, but the next day I did get an email from the mayor saying, quote, "The city has a new city attorney, and until she is brought up to speed on the pending litigation, I will hold off on comments." I thought that odd, since any plans I looked at the news releases from the mayor's office and have found nothing about the discharge problem, nor has there been any news online about it. So unless I hear otherwise from some knowledgeable person, it seems the city is now not doing anything about this. That's tragic, since it's been eight months since I first stood here, and you could have had the problem solved, or nearly solved by now. I'm not sure how you can rationalize either your inaction or your lack of responses to public inquiries about this. I will wait here at the rail after the meeting finishes tonight to see if anyone from the city has any updates they can provide me, because I do need to respond to my members of our organization tomorrow and tell them where we're at with this. This fear is repeating. The city has known about this problem for twenty-three years. The mayor has been in a position to solve it for over a decade. Various council members have had many years to address this. This problem could have easily been solved a long time ago, three different ways, either by adding lift station capacity and piping to the treatment plant, or by installing collecting tanks to hold the overflow until it can be pumped to the plant, or by increasing the segregation of the ring water from the sewage. It can still easily be solved, but you have to act, pass a resolution, appropriate funding, and get this done. This is and has been an emergency, but now it looks like not only have you taken this off the front burner, it doesn't seem to be anywhere near the stove. As the governing body for the city, does that seem like a responsible stance to take? Can you do better? Thank you.
Hello, I'm Rebecca Bear. I reside at three oh seven York Street. And I just wanted to discuss firstly, the walkable Olean. I just wanted to discuss, you know, regarding the ongoing construction with the sidewalks. I know last week we discussed if the sidewalks were up to code. From my understanding, we said it was four inches on the sidewalk and then six at the driveway. I thought this would be a topic that would be discussed today, because it's ongoing, and if it is incorrect, I mean, essentially, we're going to have to come out of pocket to get it corrected, to rectify the situation. Also, too, is, you know, there's discussion about the responsibility of maintaining the sidewalks. Was this something that was discussed in the preliminary? You know, discussion, is it going to be the residents, is it going to be the city? But I believe it should be under the city's jurisdiction, just because, again, none of the residents were anticipating to have to do this. And then landlords, you know, as we continue to navigate through our city streets, it is impossible to overlook the numerous properties that do not meet the required codes and standards. The responsibility of maintaining a clean and well-kept home falls not only on the occupants, but the homeowners and the landlords. It is time for us to hold property owners accountable for the condition of their buildings. Neglecting to adhere to code regulations not only affects the aesthetics of our city, but also reflects poorly on our community. I urge that we revisit current policies and procedures for addressing noncompliance with code regulations. Let us work together to enforce section twelve dash seventy-nine on the responsibility of owners and occupants, ensuring that every individual takes pride in maintaining their property. And also, too, we cannot turn a blind eye to the homes that have been neglected for years, contributing to the decline of our city's appearance. Let us remember section twelve-five, exterior standards, excuse me, and make a collective effort to enhance the beauty of our surroundings through preventative maintenance and regular care, which currently, it doesn't look as if that's going on in any of the homes. I also, too, wanted to know what the situation was with three sixteen Laurel and three thirty North Tenth. I know there was eighty-five thousand dollars that was allocated to demolish these homes, however, that was put on a standstill, or it was tabled. Why is that? We were going to get legal counsel. Did we speak to legal counsel? And if that's the case, did we incur, you know, expenses for this? Like, we, as a city, need to know this, as the residents. Because when I drove by there today, I mean, like I said, they're still standing, so. Another thing is, you know, like, my other concerns is the development process, excuse me. Without proper oversight, we risk facing vacant lots and potential loss of revenue, especially as tax breaks are granted to developers. Over on Berry Street, we had a developer that we were giving a forty million tax break. I mean, what does that do for us? What does that benefit for us, for the city? Does it bring any jobs in? It's just more, you know, housing. It's like, we have to be thoughtful and, like, mindful about these things, but especially the tax break, like, why would we want to give that, you know, break, that significant And then I want to talk about, too, like, homelessness. You know, my understanding is that we have met twice to tackle this, but yet we remain at a standstill. The gravity of the situation is undeniable, with optics indicating a surge in homelessness. It presents an unfortunate predicament for all of us, indeed a humanitarian crisis that touches upon the very fabric of our society. The fact that we are three months into this grace period with neither policies or procedures established yet is disheartening. And as you all can know, when you go around the city of Olean, there's an uptick of homelessness. And then the water. So we've received a notice on November twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-four, concerning the outstanding water bill balances. As outlined in the notice, any remaining balance, as of February twentieth, two thousand and twenty-five, will result in a lien being placed against the property during the property tax assessments and compliance with the city charter. I understand that if the balance remains unresolved, the account will be closed and a fee of two fifty will be incurred. Subsequently, a new account will be established, and the property owner is deemed to maintain compliance with the city of Olean. So that means I'm done?
Yeah, just please write it down.
Okay. You know, while this process may appear somewhat contradictory, I believe that this notice was issued as a reactive measure than a proactive one. And then just the water repairs, too, that the gentleman brought up as well. I mean, we have eighty to a hundred catch basins that need to be replaced. This has just been sitting, we've been tabling this for months now, actually decades, so it's, we need to take care of it. I mean, given the environmental and public health implications of this issue, it needs to be rectified. And why it's not, I'm not too sure.
Thank you.
Okay.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Anyone else? Okay, this time I'll call the public comment closed, because we have some bills.
The auditor's process, claims against the city of Olean has persisted to each element and recommends payment thereof. Whereas the auditor has presented to the common council, bills and claims against the city of Olean total in one million four hundred eighty-one thousand, two hundred forty-five dollars and ninety-one cents for the budget, and recommends payment thereof. Now therefore, be resolved at the same B and are hereby audited and allowed, and the auditor is hereby authorized and directed to draw warrants for the payment thereof at the amount set opposite each respective claim.
All right, we've all received our copies of finance and bills. We've got our opportunity to reconcile them back to the budget, and ask our questions, or department heads and the mayor. Are there any comments or questions before moving forward with these? Same none? Can I get a sponsor?
I'll sponsor.
Motion's made by Alderman Panis? Can I get a second? Alderman, second. All right, the court is called.
Alderman Benyon?
Yes.
Alderman Panis?
Yes.
Alderman McCall?
Yes.
Alderman Robinson?
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia?
Yes.
And Alderman Crawford?
Yes.
Passing unanimously. Local law number four dash two thousand and twenty-four, no PL number, the local law sending a moratorium on the creation of new solar farms and energy production facilities in the city of Olean.
All right, we've talked about this in committees. We've had our opportunity to receive feedback on this from the public. Are there any comments or questions? Alderman Robinson?
I'm trying to find my spot here. I wanted to throw in, as previously mentioned, this, we have a moratorium in place. It went for a year, and then we extended it for six months, and now we're looking to extend it again for another six months. I remember at the last extension, I mentioned to the council that my personal opinion is that we should not do another extension because of the fact that, I mean, it's just another extension. I believe that the city, I mean, has had a year and a half to put something in place. When we checked our emails from the information that we received from Wade Bottromo, he stated a small bit that, to me, was an eyeliner. He said, "The most important thing at this point is that the city should be proceeding with some urgency. Once you adopt the CDP, the city is still going to need to update its zoning code." So with that in mind, I believe that we should be looking to update a code and get that done. It can always be amended, right? But going over and over and over with these moratoriums, I think can be overkill. On the opposite end, I do recognize why we're doing this and why we're putting it in place, and we want to be able to preserve Olean's properties and be able to manage them, you know, as a governing body, as a city. But at the same time, I just think, a year and a half, and the timing of the comprehensive plan, I want to make sure I note that, that, you know, I think, as a city, we can do better instead of doing another extension. So tonight, for me, unfortunately, I'm going to be alone.
Any other comments, questions? Alderman McCall?
I do, I read the same comments, and I do have to say, I agree with Alderman Robinson in terms of, I think, once we put the moratoriums in, it was kind of set to the side, and I think that the comments that were received from the ICOM in terms of, that we need to, in essence, proceed with some expediency in putting together a plan, I do think with the comprehensive plan coming out, that we should wait. And so I am going to vote yes in terms of the moratorium, but it will be the last time I will vote yes, because I think that we should have our comprehensive plan out. I think we should be making sure that those things are cohesive, and that if we need to put zoning in place, that we put zoning in place, and not just, as I think we frequently do, is kick the can down the road a little bit further, and then it comes up in six months. So I will vote yes, but I will not vote yes on another moratorium after this.
Okay, anyone else? Just for some clarification, Carrie, when the comprehensive development plan is finalized, how does that work? Do, are there formal recommendations that will come out of that, that we will be able to use to update zoning laws as it pertains to this issue?
It's actually on page fifty-three of the plan. There's a matrix, and it lists us doing a zoning code update, and specifically addressing solar. It does not provide that language. So I applied in July of this year, through the CFA process, to try to get funding to hire a professional firm in order to update our entire zoning code, and that, the last time I was done was December twenty-first, nineteen ninety-nine, and we're still waiting on a word announcement. So they should be forthcoming in December.
Okay. Thank you. Alderman Robinson?
Carrie, you just mentioned that you would have to get assistance with wording in July, what, twenty-twenty-five?
No, I applied in this past July
Oh, okay, okay.
For funding, to fund that project, so that way we could hire a professional firm that specializes in zoning to help guide, really, the council in the zoning board in this process.
Any other questions? Okay, so we do need some sponsors for this. I'll pick, if anyone's willing to sponsor this?
I'll sponsor.
All right, I'll, I'll just be it, Alderman Panis?
I'll second.
Same, Alderman Benyon? Hold the court, please call it.
Alderman Benyon?
Yes.
Alderman Panis?
Yes.
Alderman McCall?
Yes.
Alderman Robinson?
No.
And Alderman Anastasia?
Yes.
And President Crawford?
Yes.
Resolution passes five to one. Resolution number one-one-five dash twenty-four, PL number one-one-zero dash twenty-four, a committee by Alderman McCall, seconded by Alderman Benyon, to rename the Downtown Property Improvement Program, the Commercial Property Improvement Program, as well as to amend the Olean Revolving Loan Fund Committee to the Olean Commercial Loan Fund Committee, and to amend the guidelines and applications to reflect this change.
Okay, talked about this. Any comments or questions? Same none? Hold the court, please call the board.
Alderman Benyon?
Yes.
Alderman Panis?
Yes.
Alderman McCall?
Yes.
Alderman Robinson?
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia?
Yes.
And President Crawford?
Yes.
Resolution passes unanimously.
Okay, anything before we adjourn? We have a happy Thanksgiving. Okay, your house?
Your house.
Okay, I'll have twenty-three over, you might as well join. Twenty-four. I'll make the motion adjourned, can I get a second? Seconded by Alderman McCall.